Where is he? Is that the guy standing in the back?
Yes, that guy under the clock.
Our first day back.
You don't have a clue.
Eighty-six, he's not gonna let any more in.
They don't know, that's why they're all here.
Did you, did you tell him? Yeah, it could be.
Who's this one?
We can never.
Oh, that's on your case. No, that's for.
Take the other chair.
Yeah.
Two more.
Two more. One.
Two more.
Yeah. Just go with hand down. There they come. All right. Now, like two minutes, I can let any more in. Nothing to do about it. It's what the rooms is.
Yeah, we're missing a roll of chairs. Should we check the closet?
Can't let more than eighty-six people in.
No. Are we missing a roll of chairs? Are we missing a roll of chairs?
There's eighty-six people here.
Oh, oh, oh.
Hey, stop them from coming in.
Oh. More, more.
Not this meeting, I don't, I don't agenda, so I don't think so. Unless it comes up headed to agenda, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
On the back row on the right with white hair. Looking down that now.
Stand, stand him out.
Right there on the back row. Back row on the right.
Next month's meetings.
Yes.
No way, but I don't know his name.
See if they make it through prep's eight. They do. Expect.
You'd love it.
In his case.
Thrive on it.
Two minutes warning. There's not much money on the line. Yeah, one minute.
Animal.
For a long time. Thirty, thirty Iowa. Or where he gets.
He can come in?
Oh, Mr. Bob.
Who? No. He's been kept out too. They just want to keep the door open.
Man, I was, we decided to let him speak.
Well, he's not if we can.
Two minutes, two seconds, he's late.
Happy New Year and good evening. Please turn off all cell phones and pages at this time. This is the regularly scheduled public meeting, January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that it's two thousand and sixteen. Just want to remind you that our site plans and our preliminary, um, plans, I mean plaques, we have to deal with the ordinances and which is set before us. If there's any issue with that, please take it to the Glen County Commissioners. And zoning issues, we'll hear you and we will deal with that accordingly. We are now, we're gonna have invocation with Colonel Lawrence. Would you please stand? And after that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Those who want to participate, thank you.
Most gracious Father, once again, we come before you. We come, dear God, asking for your guidance, asking for your guidance and thanking you for bringing us through two thousand and fifteen and to the beginning of two thousand and sixteen. As we move forward, dear heavenly Father, let us move forward, not only considering our regulations, but also considering the Islanders, those who have concerns. As we move forward, dear God, let it do so in an organized manner. Bless the Islanders and bless the Commissioners who are here this evening. These blessings we ask in our precious and sacred name, amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention of our own.
Now, I'm going to review the meeting procedures. The Planning Commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plaques and site plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on rezonings, certain planning documents, ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on preliminary plaques and site plans and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance and other applicable regulization, regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Citizens desiring to speak in favor or in opposition to the request may then address the Planning Commission. Group should select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. And we prove the minutes for December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
I have, have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have, have one addition.
Chair, recognize Mr. Usher.
Yes, um, in the, let me see, it's in the, um, get to it, ma'am, chairman. In the Glen Oaks, um, the minutes, uh, the applicant agreed to build a fence. Uh, I would like to see that put in the minutes, although it didn't make the motion, he did agree to it during, during our discussion period with him. So I would like to see that placed in the minutes.
Any discussion, any disagreement?
Thank you. That's all I had.
Make a motion to.
I make a motion to approve the amendments amended.
Is there a second motion to approve the minutes as amended where, um, there's a fence to be added? Second. All in favor? Oppose? It's unanimous. Is there a request, Mr. Hanley, to postpone any action, emergency additions or changes in order of presentation?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Chair, staff has a request that, uh, from staff level, uh, that the Commission consider deferring item number ZM thirty-one twenty-six, the Lucas Office Building, and ZM thirty-one sixty-one McKinnon, uh, Saint Simon's Airport, uh, until the February meeting. And to that end, uh, we have, uh, moved the February meeting to Eppworth Meeting Hall. We tried to get a larger meeting room for this, this meeting tonight and the theater was unavailable, so, uh, we moved, moved that, those meetings to there, so, uh, there, there are various issues involving each of those, uh, requested zoning cases that the staff has made up recommendations and you have had some legal advice on the, uh, Lucas Office Building get provided to you today.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer the ZM thirty-one two-six and ZM thirty-one six-one until the February meeting.
Is there any discussion?
May I ask a question? Are you asking to defer the airport as the applicant?
At, as staff.
Not as the applicant.
Well, I'm wanting the same on that one.
That's the reason I'm asking, you doing it as applicant or as a staff?
I'll, I'll do as the applicant, help.
Thank you.
Are you doing as a withdrawal or a deferral?
Deferral.
Not withdrawal?
Not withdrawal.
Madam Chairperson, my name's Austin Katz, I represent.
Yes, I'm, Mr. Katz, okay. Is there any further discussion? On, um, ZM thirty-one two-six or ZM thirty-one six-one?
Do we have a second? I didn't hear.
No.
You don't have a second yet.
I would like to separate that motion if we could and delay the airport one. That's a straightforward being a request on applicant.
Separate votes on each one.
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to, if you don't mind, amend the motion and just do them separately.
Okay, that's good.
Do the ZM thirty-one.
The question from me was any discussion on ZM thirty-one two-six first, that's what I was.
Okay, well, we had a motion.
Doesn't applicants request to defer?
No, ma'am, it is staff on a technical legal challenge.
Can we let? Can we let them, when, when's appropriate time for them to be heard on this?
That's, the Chair, the Chair and I have discussed it, this would be the appropriate time before you take a vote on it because this is the applicant's counsel. And, uh, he obviously has a different viewpoint on this request.
Thank you, madam. Chairperson, remember.
Mr. Katz, can we ask you to go to the podium and speak your name for the record, please? Yeah, there's a podium back there somewhere.
All right, thank you, my name is Austin Katz, I represent Lucas Properties, the applicant. We were informed late Thursday afternoon that there was some issue as to whether or not this application could be heard today. Um, and were informed by Ms. Dagenhart in a, in an email, that there was an issue about the location where the notice sign was posted. We have looked into that, um, and we have, um, had a meeting this morning with Associate County Attorney and Mr. Hanley and the Commissioner and discussed this. We understand that this application is complete, it is ready to be heard, and we were informed this morning that it would be heard today, this afternoon. We have Mr. Lucas, we have Mr. Bryson, the architect, we have tenants from the building at issue who, who are interested in this. There are others who are interested and the issue has to do with the language in, um, the ordinance that relates to the place of posting the sign. I want to make it clear that, that on behalf of Lucas Properties, we do not consent to and oppose and object to this being set over because we already, it's been set over several times and so we would like to go forward. The, the ordinance in question, uh, which is six-one-nine point-two-C, provides that a sign will be posted on the subject property by Glen County to inform the public of the application at least twelve calendar days, but no more than thirty days before the Planning Commission meeting. Everything about that has been complied with. The question that was raised was whether or not the sign was placed on the quote "subject property." And if I may, I have, um, an exhibit that I would like to tender to the Chairperson, if I may, that shows the sign. Shows, the sign is complete. Shows the location, um, there is, it is, um, in the right of way, as it might be described, but it was next to a Lucas Properties sign. It is very clear that that is the, uh, now I have additional copies. I'll have one for everyone, but almost. Thank you. The grassy area where the sign was placed by the, uh, staff, that area has a sign that identifies Lucas Properties, the applicant here. And I may approach, I have more copies of this.
You know what, these are like all the same. These are all the same.
This is what I meant to hand out, I'm sorry.
I'll take one and I'll take one of these and pass it down because these are all the same.
What we did intend to show by the other exhibit is the sign itself was complete. Gives the, uh, place and date, um, it conforms with the requirements of the statute. There is, there, so, the question that was raised is whether or not this sign was posted on the subject property. Property is not a defined term under the ordinance. It is obvious that that property is within the control of Lucas Properties. It's by the sign that has the name Lucas Properties. Lucas Properties mows that lawn. Previous occasions, signs, advertising, other matters have been placed in the same place. And I'm sure Ms. Dagenhart will confirm that. And so, the placement, we say, conformed with the language of the statute. The statute further says, "The sign shall be posted in locations so as to be reasonably visible from the street." So the sign was placed in the only and best place where it was on the property and could be seen from the street. And that, we understand, is the only reason, uh, the quarrel about the definition of the word "property" is the only reason why, uh, the, uh, Mr. Hanley is asking to defer this. This is a due process right. This ordinance, we believe, is, has been fully complied with and we request the opportunity to go forward. We're ready, we have, um, both neighbors and our architect present, ready to answer any questions. And the, um, matter has been thoroughly reviewed by the staff and the staff's comments, uh, which you can review, show that there is no problem with this application. And so, I respectfully ask, uh, that, that you do let us go forward and be heard. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Katz, who's responsible for placing the sign?
It is the staff that is responsible for placing the county staff, yes, sir.
Well, the question I have, is it fair to penalize an applicant because the county didn't do their job?
Well, I would say, I would certainly say not.
I mean.
And I think.
If y'all had the responsibility of putting the sign in the correct spot, that's one thing. But the sign was duly posted at the appropriate time. I mean, who would know where the right of way is and the property line is? The county would know, so. That's my, you know, that's the question, why do we penalize an applicant because they did everything right?
Well, thank you, sir, we totally agree with that. We, we have done everything right, we've complied with every request. This has been deferred on previous occasions. I'm sure that the, that, that the staff acted in good faith and thought they were placing the sign in the right place. No one has failed to get notice. The sign has very, very clearly shown, uh, what is at issue.
I have a question of staff, staff is requesting the deferral. I would like to hear from staff about the deferral request.
As, uh, Mr. Katz alluded to, last week we had a challenge, uh, from an attorney representing a tenant in the building, stating that the section that he did not believe that we were in compliance with the code. And our code mirrors the coded, uh, code section in Georgia, uh, for word about the placement of the sign. And, um, this is the first time in nine, ten years, uh, that we've had this particular challenge made regarding the placement of a sign. Uh, we've always attempted to, to place it in the most visible location on the property. This one may not have gotten on the property, but, um, as Mr. Katz alluded to, it was in, uh, plain sight, uh, you know, for, for the site and it had the information on it about this meeting.
Were you in the meeting this morning that Mr. Katz alluded to?
Yes, yes.
And did the county attorney's office say that it should?
It, it was his initial opinion that the, that the purpose and intent of the law had been satisfied. And he was going to look into the further with, furtherance of it and that's the information that you, you all received collectively this afternoon.
Thank you, that is correct, in fact, uh, Mr. Worley said, when he was in law school, he had a professor who said, "There's law and there's practical law." And the example he gave was an ordinance that might say, "You can't have three-wheel vehicles in this park." And so someone has a three-wheel perambulator, not a motorized vehicle. The practical law is, well, that ordinance does not mean a non-motorized, uh, vehicle for children. And here, the word "subject property," it is very clear that this sign is on the subject property. Lucas controls that, they mow that grass. It is in front of their building, it is next to their sign.
But the thing is, you, you can't prescribe against county property, so if it's on a right of way, even though, you know, you can prescribe against county property, it's still their property. And this says it's supposed to be posted on the subject property. I kind of see a conflict in here because while it says it's supposed to be posted on subject property, if it was posted on subject property, would it then be on the other side of the tall sign? The, the, the tall sign that he shows us in the picture, is that their property? Where, where would it have been posted, had it been posted on the subject property?
This, this sign has, has a buffer in front of most of it, that, that's the access road off to the side.
That's why I think there's a conflict a bit in the ordinance because it says while it has to be visible from the street, it has to be posted on the subject property.
Yes.
Well, if it's posted on the subject property and there's all these bushes in front of it, then it can't be visible from the street, so that's a bit of a conflict.
Yes, it is. And, um, staff tries to do the best that they can and in some instances, uh, where it says it's supposed to be visible, you know, to the most, the general public, the alternative we have is to put it parallel, which doesn't seem to satisfy that instance where, where you really had to look and see if you can see it going parallel versus perpendicular to the line of travel.
So if this was posted on the subject property, which would be behind the hedges, it would not be visible from the street, is that correct?
We have, we, we have.
Please, 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 please. Please, thank you. Okay, so that, okay, well then I.
May I, may I say just, I'm sorry.
Then I would probably say go ahead and.
May I, may I, may I? May I ask Mr. Katz?
Sure.
In accordance with what Mr. Hanley was saying, that this afternoon, we all got a message from Will Worley, who you said, said that it was all right to go ahead. And this message this afternoon, which I don't know if you've seen, is that bottom line, what do we do? The safest course of action is to defer this item until the next meeting and to repost the sign on the property. That's as of, uh, two-thirty-four this afternoon.
Yes, sir, I was in my office, I did not receive any call, any email, any communication from anyone at the county, uh, reversing the decision that had been made. I went on to Mr. Lucas's office, had they tried to reach me, my staff would have sent the call out.
And along that, along that same line, was the app, was the, uh, person objecting or her attorney, were they advised that the meeting was going to be postponed?
I don't.
I mean, I understand you're saying you did not, uh, get a notice this because it came, I guess, to the Planning Commission. But that this is a memo from the Assistant County Attorney to the Island Planning Commission saying, "The safest course of action is defer the item." And that the, as I understand it, the opposing counsel was given notice that the meeting was going to be deferred and therefore he did not have an objective to have a chance to appear tonight. And if, which is the same as you're saying, you were out of your office and did not get the notice and so you did not get fair notice. Mr.
Is there any more questions?
They did not tell them it was going to be deferred, they told them that they were going to ask that it be deferred. No, they were told that it was going to be deferred. Well, they recommended, but still, we were the ones making the decision, not county attorney.
I object to this lady who has no standing interrupting the presentation that I'm making.
We have that.
I don't. My, my point is that, um, we've deferred this numerous times, we've, uh, cost the applicant time and money, uh, unneeded, I think, and the county made a mistake here and I don't think we should put that on the applicant for that and if the applicant is willing to have this heard tonight and, and accept the vote, or however it comes out, I'm willing to do that. I'd rather, I would rather defer to them if they want to go forward.
Thank you.
I think this, you know, we've already been threatened by a lawsuit before on this issue before they went back and, and redid it under a planned development, I think. I think anything that happens with this piece of property, there's probably going to be a lawsuit. So, you know, if we're going to be afraid of that, we won't do anything.
Well, ma'am, make a comment, please, okay, you talk about a lawsuit, however, I mean, it goes both ways and if you look at it from that perspective, technically it's going to hurt the applicant more so than the county. And it will tie this project up even further.
I understand that, and they, I think they understand that.
Madam Chairperson, we will take our chances, we know what the law is. We've been deferred a number of times wrongfully, there is money at stake, there are tenants who need additional space in this building. They are growing businesses, the, the objector has no standing here. She is a tenant, a disgruntled tenant, and there is no basis whatsoever to simply defer this. You know, when you don't let people present their case, then you have destroyed the democracy. And, and we have a right to present this, you have the right and authority to decide it. We ask you to do that, that's all. We're simply asking you to hear it and decide it.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
David, what is the date of the applicant for this? What is the date of the application? I mean, many of the deferrals they asked for, not us, I think.
Yeah, they asked for the deferrals and the.
I just want to know the date of the application. Where I'm going, David, if we don't do it tonight, is it within the sixty days?
Nine-twenty-two-fifteen.
It's outside, you, you understand where I'm headed?
Yes.
If we do not approve it within sixty days, if the application date is automatically approved, and all, if we defer it till February, are we going? and if we defer it till February, are we going to be outside of that 60 days and it'll be automatically deferred? See, I'm asking the date. I don't want it to automatically be done because we didn't do what we're supposed to do. I could do. It says, you looking for the ordinance on that?
Yeah.
It's on page, page 11-3, if I'm reading it right. 1103 zoning decisions, 1103 B, 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 four.
No, we had to keep it for 30 days without it being touched. So that moved it to this meeting.
So that made it complete at this meeting?
Yes.
So no, no, we not be, be on there because it was not adjusted to be a complete hearing until tonight.
So we can delay it?
Yes.
And be okay?
Yes.
We would love to have it automatically approved, but that isn't necessary. We're prepared to present it and, and we think it ought to be granted. We think you'll be convinced of that when you hear it. But if you don't hear it, then we, we will have been deprived of the right to make use of our property in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Katz. Any further discussion?
I would like to just say one thing. It's been common practice in Glen County for as long as I've been the commissioner, which has been a while off and on, that the signs were put on the right of way in front of the property. And, and for, and the reason being is that was the most visible place to put it. I, I, I think staff has, has followed what has been done in this county for, for, for many, many years. I don't have any problem with this, with the sign being where it was.
Was there a second to that?
Well, I have a, not yet, no. I have a question because he was saying it's been done in the county for many years. Does that make it legal in the eyes?
No, it doesn't make it legal.
Okay.
The code is as the code of Georgia is written on zoning actions. It says on the property.
May, may I respond to that briefly?
No, go ahead.
Can we pause the question? Was there a second on that motion?
Was there a second on the motion?
No second.
What's, what's the motion?
To defer.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion to defer.
Was there a second?
It was a motion made to defer ZM 3126, the Lucas Office Building. Is there a second on that motion? There's no second?
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Do we hear it?
All right, let's hear it.
Thank you.
Okay, there's on the item number ZM 3161. Oh, I'm sorry.
We got the other one.
This is, we're all of this one now.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Thank you. I had my numbers messed up.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, is there any chance to speak on behalf of our attorney?
Not right now.
We've received official notice that this meeting, that this ZM would be deferred. It was official notice from the county.
You're out of order. You will be allowed to speak, but not at this moment.
I'll make a motion to defer ZM 3126 as the applicant has requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
No, three, ZM 3161. 3161, excuse me. I got the wrong numbers. I make a motion to defer ZM 3161 as the applicant has requested.
I'll resecond.
Oh, got a second?
There's been, there's been a motion and a second to defer ZM 3161? All in favor? I can't see Stan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
That's deferred to the February meeting, right?
It's deferred, yes, to the February 19th, 2000, well, February, what's the date?
I think it's the 16th.
16th.
February 16th, 2016.
And that'll be at Eppworth?
And it'll be at Eppworth. Okay, there's a request for preliminary plat approval and plat vacation. No, let's go back. We have to go back to that. Okay, let's go back to ZM 3126, the Lucas Office Building. Comment from staff?
Lucas Murphy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Request, consider request to rezone Lot 4 of C Marsh's professional site from OC Office Commercial to PD Plan Development. This lot is located at 301 Sea Island Road, approximately 900 feet east of its intersection with Frederica Road. Applicant Austin H. Katz with Katz and Brooks LLC, Agent for Lucas Properties Holding LLC, parcel ID 0414404. Current zoning OC Office Commercial. Proposed zoning PD Plan Development. Comprehensive plan use designation, they adopt the future land use. Map shows this site as community mixed-use village. Existing land use office. Planning, the applicant is requesting a change in zoning for an office building located at 301 Sea Island Road. The proposed PD text will limit the use of the building to insurance agency, offices uses that do not include any storage, sale, rental, or servicing of goods on the premises and the real estate agency. The PD text also reduces the required parking spaces from one space per 200 square feet of floor space to one space per 300, 300 square feet of floor space. If this zoning, if this rezoning application is approved, the site plan that accompanies the application will also be approved. On the site plan, the applicant proposes a 3,463 square foot addition on the north side of the building. The applicant also proposes the installation of a type A alternate buffer at the rear of the property and a type E buffer at the front of the property. There was already a 20-foot buffer agreement between the applicant and the Black Bank's POA on the east side of the property.
Can someone turn that light off behind you there?
Thank you.
Whoa, not all of them, not all of them.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Casey Degenhart and I will be providing you information about this case tonight. It is for 301 Sea Island Road. It is also known as the Lucas Building. It is in the C Marsh's Business Center on Sea Island Road. The highlighted square shows where the building is located. Here is the front of the building. Here is the east side of the building looking west. Here is the rear of the building. We have several rear shots, just so you all can see, because the, the PD text and the site plan propose, that the site plan that accompanies the PD text propose an extension of the building into the, into the rear, I guess what's right now, just lawn and a couple of trees. So here is the rear. The rear, I don't want to say driveway, but I guess it's an alley behind, that goes behind all of the buildings where parking is provided. And where the mouse pointer is, you can see that is where some of the building expansion would take place. Again, this is to consider a request to rezone Lot 4 of the C Marsh's professional site from OC Office Commercial to PD Planned Development. The lot is located at 301 Sea Island Road, approximately 900 feet east of the Sea Island Road's intersection with Frederica Road. The proposed PD text will limit the use of the building to insurance agency and office, and office uses that do not include any storage, sale, rental, or servicing of equipment, servicing of goods on the premises and a real estate agency. The PD text also reduces, the proposed PD text also reduces the required parking spaces from one space per 200 square feet of floor space to one space per 300 square feet of floor space. Rezonings to PD also require a proposed site plan. A recommendation to the Board of Commissioners will include the plan development text, the site plan, and the landscape plans that accompany that PD text and that we have included with the report. Here is the proposed site plan. You can see on the rear or at the top on here is the expansion of the building. And here is the proposed landscape plan. They do plan on removing those trees that are Xed out, but they do plan on locating or relocating those trees on the property. So they will not be removed from the property. They are going to be put somewhere else on the property. And again, this is a request to rezone Lot 4 of C Marsh's professional site from OC Commercial to PD Plan Development. Your possible actions are to move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of rezoning application ZM 3126, to move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of rezoning application ZM 213126, excuse me, with conditions, to move to recommend denial of rezoning application ZM 3126, or to defer rezoning application ZM 3126. And the following slide has the possible motions. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
On page three of the PD text, under C, B, accessory uses, it says off-street parking or storage area for customer, client, employee, other vehicles. I thought you just said there was no storage area here. You just told me there was no storage. And this says on the off-street parking or storage.
No, you said page three.
Page three, item C, B, 1B, accessory uses off-street parking.
For customer, client, or employee-owned vehicles.
Right, it says or storage. So what, are they going to store vehicles? I mean, I don't understand that storage area. Perhaps the applicant would be the one to answer that, but.
I would ask him, my.
The storage area, so.
I believe it would be for the clients or the employees to park their cars there and take a communal vehicle somewhere else.
Is that the storage?
I, I would want to ask the, to clarify, to ask the applicant about that, just so I don't say things that aren't true.
Thank you.
Can you discuss the background of the reduced parking requirements and why that's being asked for and what the effects of that would be on the surrounding properties and the, and the existing tenants?
That is, I can say what I remember. And that's the adjacent property, which is a PD also, has the same requirements, that it's one space per 300. However, I do also remember that this, this portion of the C Marsh's Professional Center has many more parking spaces than is required currently. And that they have an agreement with all of the buildings and all of the parking area in the C Marsh's Professional Site to share parking spaces and travel lanes. So there is a good amount of parking, whether they expand the building or not. They will still have more than what will be required for parking.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the building setbacks, does, will this comply with the current ordinances?
Yes, ma'am, it should. They are not proposing to alter the, the curb cut or, or anything else like that, just the expansion of the building. There is a, a large buffer area at the rear that's required where they're going to be planting that type A alternative buffer.
So it's not going to exceed the 70% for the district as defined? And here on, this is on, district as defined as all land determined to be suitable for improvement in building?
Correct. It will go right up to that number. I believe it's like 1% less than that required or that upper limit.
It appears that the, the addition doesn't even go as far back as the building next to it. That's what it looks like. I mean, it isn't even as large as the one next to it.
Correct.
I think that statement about that the others have 300 parking, one parking space for 300 square foot, I don't think that's correct.
Sea Island.
That whole building is one for 300?
Yes, Sea Island, yes, was rezoned to have that, have that.
I read that and I saw it said one for 200.
No, no, it's, the bank and everything is under the, is under the standard. And the Sea Island Company resigned there to change their standard.
I have a question, maybe I should wait until later, but how will this affect the Stuttering Foundation?
Well, I think she's just one of the tenants, she'll probably speak.
No, but there, there was a conflict there. I am, I'm aware that that's one of the tenants. But my question is, how will it affect? In view of the fact that they're losing their window, I've made free visits over there and I'm trying to get some idea as to how this is going to affect them.
I have no idea. I know that this is a change from what they proposed last year, from the updated site plan they proposed last year. I believe, I believe I'm going to let the applicant tell you that because they know more of the situation around that than I do.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is being, the building is being extended?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if the building is being extended, how can it be that the entry courts and sidewalks will remain unchanged? Is, is that because they extend beyond what's there now?
It's the rear of the building. They would do away with some of those, some of that green space at the rear of the building. Again, like, again, this is just a proposed site plan, so we don't know where exactly everything is going to be located yet. We just know they would like to extend their building in that area.
Was, was the applicant told that this would be deferred?
The applicant, um, the applicant was told that we would be requesting a deferral because of a legal, because of a challenge.
The message I've seen did not have any qualifications.
Stan, we've already voted on that issue.
Well, I don't think so.
On the furl issue.
We still have the matter of representation.
We, we did not approve the furling this issue, so.
I didn't ask anything about the furl. I said, did the applicants, did the? Attorney for the tenant was, the, the attorney told that it would be deferred and that because he was told with no qualifying language, the, the.
Hearsay, I mean, I didn't know that.
Well, it did.
There's an email.
I, I never saw the email, but, I mean, are we going to argue that point?
No, I'm just saying that, that we are depriving the tenant of a chance for representation and that's not a, I don't think the American way of doing things.
Stan, I think the tenant's going to have every opportunity to say something about it. So if we can get on with the meeting, I think we can hear from her.
Okay, we're just going to hear from the applicant?
Yes, thank you.
But, 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 Ms. Chairman, if Mr. Willis did not receive that, could I have that entered into the record?
Stan, I, I don't know for sure I got that. I may, you know, but. I may, you know, but all I got was something from the county, from the assistant attorney.
I would like to have the notice to the attorney.
The assistant police confirmed postponed at IPC here, so it doesn't say...
Hold on a moment.
Doesn't have a who is to, I mean, it's a copy of everybody, so...
You need to see a copy of the email.
Yeah, and I don't look at all attorney emails also. So, you know, that really has no bearing on what I'm going to decide. So that has no relevance to me of what somebody's attorney may have said.
I said what the staff said.
I understand that, but I think we've gone through this.
May I have a question for the applicant?
Okay, hold on for a moment.
Right.
Well, all right, well, hold on a moment, because Mr. Humphries asked that it be entered into the records. So I'm saying, go ahead and enter the email from staff to the attorney into the records. All right, I'm asking for the applicant to speak. Mr. Castle, either you want to have this conversation or we're going to hear what we need to hear. We are ready now.
Okay. My name is Art Lucas with Lucas Properties. And thank you, Madam Chairwoman and the Commissioners, for allowing this to be heard tonight. I want to give you kind of a quick overview of what we're trying to do and why we want to do it. And then I will ask our architect, Mr. Larry Bryson, to come up and go with the technical side of it. We, our building is 100% leased and we've got great tenants. And we've, we've had four tenants request more space in our building. And this has been going on for some time, and we want to accommodate our tenants. One of our tenants, and I don't know if he's here, he was, I think he was outside because he couldn't get in because a room was filled, was Roberts Engineering, which is a civil engineering firm. He came into our building about three years ago, one person, and now he has six people. And he's an expanding business, and he needs more space. We have a foundation in our business, the Terry Thomas Foundation, and she's here tonight. We have North Sea Global, Mr. Villem Nolte is here tonight. He has asked for an opportunity to expand his business. He's an investor. We have a CPA who has come to us, and she wants to grow her business more. And so we want to try to accommodate our customers. And that's our, and we don't want this to be a controversial process. We just, we need some more square footage, 3,400 approximately square feet, so we can accommodate our customers. Our neighbors who, the Sea Island Company, which is next door to us, we got a letter from their general counsel saying they were certainly fine with our, what we were doing. They were very aware of it. And our neighbors behind us, the Black Banks, I think they've been okay with it. We've had good communications with them. I know the parking issue came up, about the 1 to 200 and 1 to 300. Last February, from February through September, we did a parking study in our complex. And we went out at nine in the morning, we went out at one in the afternoon, we went out at between three and four in the afternoon, three times a day, Monday through Friday, and we counted cars. And we did it for the Sea Marsh Complex. We found the average car count was 62 cars. The peak car count was 69 cars on certain days. This project has room for 195 cars in the project. So we're using about one-third the capability right now of what this, as far as the car count goes. So we don't think, by any kind of rational way of looking at it, we don't think parking is an issue. The tree issue came up, and most of the trees behind the building, when I bought the building back in the summer of '11, we planted the trees. We planted many of those trees, the majority of the trees. And we're more than happy, and we have a plan to relocate those trees to the, to the borders of the property based on the plans that we presented. The final thing I want to say is that I bought this building in the summer of, it was in August of 2011. The building was a shell. It had a dirt floor, it had rafters, it had, it had been sitting there for, what, three or four years? The building next to us was a shell, it had a dirt floor. The bank, which was next to that, Coastal Bank, was downsizing, and there was nothing going on. Well, I took a risk as an entrepreneur. And, and I said, I think, you know, someday we can make this project hum. We built the building out with one, without a tenant, had no commitments. Over a period of two or three years, we leased up the building. And during this period of time, the, and I think we helped start this, the center came alive. It was a dead center when we got there. And now we have the Sea Island Company next door, we have a post office next door. The bank is doing better, the bank says they're, you know, they're expanding their operation again. And I think it's, you know, I am an environmentalist, I believe in doing things right. I want to live in a very clean community. But you need a little bit of commercial activity. Otherwise, this island is not going to be a place where people can be gainfully employed. And we've got businesses in our facility that want to expand, and we certainly would like to accommodate them. And I would ask for your, to be granted this application. And I'd like to have our architect, Mr. Larry Bryson, come up now and answer any technical questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Larry Bryson, and I'm architect for the project. Thank you for the opportunity to present and answer any question that you may have. And if I may, I've done a short synopsis to hit the highlights of items that are most important to y'all in regard to, to meeting the requirements of zoning. So if it's okay, I'd like to bring these to you. The little fold-out map that I gave you will help you in seeing what the adjacent property zoning is. Also, I took the opportunity to put on that, what the parking requirements are for the surrounding commercial areas. You'll see that the Harris Teeter Shopping Center is one per 241. I know it's an odd number, but that's what it, what it is. The property, the Cinema property, is one space for 300. The properties across the street, there behind Market Street, you'll see that that is set up with a 25% reduction, which equates to one per 250. And of course, the neighboring property to Lot Number 4, which is Lot Number 3, is, is one per 300. So that might help you have a little better feeling for neighboring parking requirements. Just to run briefly through the little synopsis, I'm sure y'all may have already scanned through it. But the, the pervious, it equates to 33.97% of the total site. Impervious is 66.03% of the total site. You see that equated acreages there. It's .91% impervious, or .91 acres of perv, impervious. The zoning, of course, Casey's already been through that and read that. I think y'all understand what is allowed there. I know an issue came up about storage. We'll gladly strike that from the, from the PD text. The map that I've given you shows the adjacent zoning. I think we've kind of covered that pretty well. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. Easements and buffers, there is an agreed buffer of 25 feet with the neighboring Black Banks. And that's on the east side of the property, adjacent to the entrance to Black Banks. And a little later on, we'll get into the buffers and landscape buffers around the property. Setbacks, east side is 25 feet, which is the Black Banks entrance drive. The south side, which is Sea Island Road, is a 30-foot setback. The west property line is a 10-feet. And then the north, which again backs up to Black Banks, is 15. And we're well within any of those setbacks. Existing water, of course, it is existing, the sewer is existing, fire hydrants are existing. We're, there's no proposed change to any of that. The existing stormwater drainage is there, it's already in place, it's existing. One thing we are going to do, and this came from some discussions with some of the neighbors in Black Banks, we're, we're going to take all of our roof water and through drainage systems, we're going to take it to the south side of the property into, into the stormwater system there, which will relieve some of the pressure on the system behind the building, adjacent to the Black Banks neighbors. So that, that'll take a little bit of, of the drainage out of that system. Curb cuts are existing to the property, there's no proposed improvements. The only thing we are going to do is to relocate some ADA parking spaces from the rear of the building to the east side of the building to accommodate some adjustments that we're doing there. And I'll, in a moment, point that out to you on the architectural plan. On the, there's 195 total parking spaces that are on this property, are on the total property for, for the four lots in this subdivision. Mr. Lucas has already been through the, the traffic study that they've done, but I've got some more defined information, which you've got there, if that helps you any. The landscape buffers, on the east side of the property, there is a type A. East side is, is the side that abuts the entrance to Black Banks subdivision. On the north side, there, there's an existing 15-foot landscape buffer, which is the backside of Black Banks. And we're, there's a proposed landscape plan that you, you've seen for how we're going to handle those. And then on the south side, which is Sea Island Road, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer there. There's already heavy vegetation in it, but we're adding to that, adding more to that. The refuge collection is existing, all the signage is existing, there's no changes to that. Tree counts, we, the required is 11.04 credits. We've, there are 38 credits in trees that we are retaining. And we're actually adding an additional 2.77 credits for a total of 40.7 credits. Outdoor lighting, where there's no proposed changes to that. If there's any over bleed from that, we'll happily screen those fixtures as, as they may need to be. And that's sort of the, a brief synopsis. You know, Casey, if you wouldn't mind, can you go to the, or David, can you go to the architectural plan?
This is the addition to the building, this, this is the current building. Our addition is this portion is 3,467 square feet. This is a covered walkway that we're adding. We have to create a porch. We're relocating these ADA parking places from here to this side, so that they'll have access to this entry, this rear corner, the stuttering foundation. So this will give them a private, nice, covered porch. And we have pulled it back to leave a note that it's here, that this is the existing door. So we're trying to accommodate those types of issues.
I have a question for Mr. Lucas. Mr. Lucas, I'm concerned about something because this property was zoned, and the entire, the entire property was zoned, am I correct? And in that zoning, you had the parking, you know, parking was including, included in that. Was, was there not a consideration at that particular time of expansion? So that when you were granted this PD rezoning, it would include whatever expansion you may want to do in the future?
What timeframe are you talking about, Madam Chair?
I am talking about when the entire property was considered for parking, when you, when you did a... Right, and after, when you decided, when you bought the building.
When I bought the building, I didn't know we, we would get any tenants.
When you decided to build what you currently have.
Right. Well, at the time, I, I didn't know we'd need to expand the building, because we had an empty building and, and no tenants. And then as we filled the building up, and then we had tenants who came to us and said, we need more space. And we, we've had that happen four times now. And so we're trying to accommodate, but it, I don't mind sure I could have projected how well this project has done. So we just finally realized that we had to have more space. But I don't think we anticipated that when I bought the building.
So what about the property that's undeveloped currently? Are you going to come back before us and request that be changed for...
Yeah. That's owned by somebody else.
Got you. My mistake.
While we're at that point about parking, just looking, looking at the plan of parking tabulation, you, you have the majority of excess parking for the whole complex. Is that whole complex still all tied together for parking?
It is tied together.
You all have, even though you're going to be a PD and they're a PD, you have an agreement for parking, everybody using all of it?
We all, like when Sea Island got their rezoning, we're all part of the same fishbowl.
Is there anyone finished with the applicant? Any more questions? Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Those who oppose, I'm sorry. You have to go to the podium. State your name, please.
Madam Chair, could we have the speaker spell their last name also?
Yes. You have been requested to spell your last name?
My last name is Rogers, R-O-G-E-R-S. I'm a resident of Black Banks. I'm right behind the property, excuse me.
Mr. Rogers, would you say your last, your first name, please?
My name is Rogers, K-N, Ken Rogers.
Thank you.
And I live right, right here. The reason I'm opposing this, first of all, I'd like to agree with Mr. Humphries. We didn't have any representation here, because I was told the thing was deferred. didn't have any representation here because I was told the thing was deferred myself. And I knew something like this would happen, so that's why I came. My concerns are, I've worked long and hard to get where I am now and have a residence in Black Banks, a beautiful community like it is. My father-in-law, who's present here tonight and can't hear real well, and I'm kind of helping him out. He's 90 years old. He's got a house next door to me as well. We're having continual draining problems, draining from the property that we're talking about onto our land behind us. I've got an estimate from my father-in-law's property of about $12,000 because of the mold underneath his house due to the drainage problem in the back of our property. I met with the engineer, who scratched his head, and he's a lot more educated than I am in the engineering field, but the water is coming toward our direction and has nowhere to go. We observed, and I took a picture of a drainage pipe that was full of leaves, dirt, and everything else. And every time it rains, my father-in-law's garage is up halfway on the tires in his yard. Everybody that's here listening to this tonight, all of them take pride in home ownership. I especially do. I get emotional about it. When we decided to be good members to Sea Island before Lucas took over, I live right on the other side of this wall, where they've shown these real pretty trees along that wall that they're proposing to plant. I'm a local general contractor. They're going to plant them right up on top of the drainage pipe that drains the place. Everybody knows roots and drainage with plastic pipes just don't work. Second of all, I'm not an engineer, but when you've got a roof that catches rainwater, dumps out onto a parking lot that's not pervious, drains into drains that were designed for that size building, and you want to change that size building, the drainage will not take care of it. They proposed in the first time before Lucas bought it that they were going to put gutters up on that building Sea Island did, and it never happened. You can look at the records in Sea Island, who had the property before Lucas. They never maintained drainage systems behind this building. Nobody's ever cleaned them. When they were building the building, we had problems with water. I came out there myself, and I said, "There's got to be a reason this isn't working, right?" Because they had engineers and people working this. And I found a pile of dirt on top of the drain that's supposed to drain the property, so they fixed that. But all they did was remove the dirt on top of the drain, which left dirt in the bottom of the pipes that never got cleaned out. My father-in-law's 89, my mother-in-law's 90. My wife and my son are over there quite a bit because we want to be close to them because of their age. And it's tough when they're sleeping in a house that's infested with mold underneath due to the water drainage. I'm just asking, make it right. Put a drainage in there that works. Put a buffer in there that works. All this plan with the trees and all this counting, you know, you're counting the trees. You're not counting the trees right behind your building. You're counting the trees on the whole property. You ain't fooling anybody. You've got a fancy attorney here, and you've got a bunch of people with a lot of money trying to get this done, but us common folks just want it done right. It's our residents. We've complained about the lighting. Nothing's gotten done. We've complained about the noise of the dumpsters dumping, trash dumpsters at 6:00 on Sunday mornings. Nothing's been done. I complained about the church buses doing 50 miles an hour behind my house. Something finally got done about that, and they're moving those. All I'm asking for is to make it right, whether you fix the drainage problem too, so my family can sleep and not worry about it, and just do the right thing. We're trying to be good neighbors in Black Banks, but I think the greed issue of trying to get more tenants versus health in the neighborhood is another subject. So I ask that it be either deferred or declined until we get a study from somebody that knows how to get the water out of my backyard and out of Mr. and Mrs. Olson's backyard, is all I'm asking. There's a couple of other things I made notes on. The lighting I talked about, drainage I talked about. Just maintain the property. The 15-foot buffer, I agree, it's within what's legal and what the county will pass, but I just don't know how they're going to continue to have a road. It's not an alley. Lady said it's not an alley. Cars go up and down that thing quite a bit. Just, we've got a lot of water dumping onto asphalt, which is petroleum. And, you know, everybody talks about being environmentally safe on the island and trying to do what's right. We're dumping every bit of that stuff on a petroleum base that's going right into Black Banks River and the marsh right beside Black Banks. Just help us do something with it, is all I ask. Thank you.
May I respond on behalf of Lucas, simply to say that we've had an engineer that will continue until they're solved. We heard about the concern of buses going down the lane and back and disturbing Mr. Rogers and his family. Mr. Lucas immediately got in touch with the community church where they had been coming through there for two years parking in a parking lot. Mr. Lucas had agreed to let that happen. But when he learned that it was disturbing neighbors, then he immediately, politely revoked that permission, and they have stopped doing that. Whatever problems there may be, Lucas' property is a good citizen. They will solve the problem. And simply denying the application is not the issue.
We're going to allow the opposition to speak at this time, and we want to allow them to speak, and if you want to rebut them after?
Thank you.
Okay.
They did respond to the church buses, and I thank you for that. But they've had nine years to discuss the water problem, and nothing's been done about it. Thank you.
I'm Jane Fraser, and I do, I'm here on behalf of the Stuttering Foundation. Our legal counsel was unable to be here because we received the notice that the meeting was going to take place on February 16th. And I've given you a copy of that email that we received and had reason to believe. We did not get any notice at all until 2:30 this afternoon, not time for counsel to drive down from Atlanta. I do want to address a couple of things. Maybe I shouldn't because I'm not an attorney, but I would like to say that the word "property" is defined, and when a sign is supposed to be by ordinance on the property, there is a definition in the ordinances on what that property is. And also, as I said earlier, a year ago, they knew absolutely where the property was, and it was properly noticed. It was not this time. I also want to call attention to the fact that you cannot really listen or vote on this without having the restrictive easements and covenants in your hand. I'm not sure why you don't. There are restrictive easements and covenants amongst the four owners. You all should know that Sea Island Lot 3 has 32 assigned spaces, or 32 spaces on Lot 3, but they have more than 55 employees. Not sure what that means to you, but it should mean that there are about 20 people with no parking space. Where are they parking? They're parking on Lot 4. So keep in mind that although Lot 4 may have enough parking spaces on Lot 4, they are obliged by these covenants and cross easements to share those parking spaces with Lot 1, which will eventually be built out. Lot 2 has 26 spaces that are assigned to it, that's the Coastal Bank. Those cannot be shared. So the overall parking situation is actually not at all, I think, the way Mr. Katz presented it. I'd also like to say that that green space that Mr. Lucas wants to build on was green space that was given in return for permission to put those buildings in at all in 2009. Recall that there were the Black Banks agreements that are still run with the land. Do you all have a copy of the Black Banks agreement tonight? Do all the commissioners have a copy? You should know that any member of Black Banks, anyone who lives in Black Banks, has the right to see that those covenants are enforced. So what Mr. Rogers and Mr. Olson say should carry some weight with you tonight. I'd also like to say that at the back of the building, there are 15, that Mr. Bryson said there were 15 feet back there. There's only 11, 11.6. The stormwater situation at the back of the building, 40% is drained with a system that was grandfathered in from 1994. It is clearly not functional because it's flooding the properties to the back, and nothing's been done about it. The buffer at the back of the building was assigned to be a type A buffer in 2009, or 2016. I thank Colonel Lawrence for mentioning this, our foundation. Our electric wiring, we reach people in 100 countries around the world. We do it through the internet. We do it through our electricity. We have a dedicated electric line running into where our computer systems are, and that will simply be torn out. There's no way for us to continue our business with our wall torn out. There are no loading zones whatsoever in the entire four-building tract. Not a single loading zone. When the 18-wheeler pulled in a month ago to unload groceries for the grocery store on Lot 3, which was supposed to be a souvenir shop, it blocked the entire parking lot. 18-wheeler. It blocked both the egress and ingress and the egress. The garbage and the food deliveries take place about eight times a day. The noise from the garbage for the grocery store is quite extraordinary. The tree credits, I won't go into the tree credits, but of course the tree credits are for all four lots. So when Lot 4, Lot 1 wants to build out, they're counting the same trees that Mr. Lucas is counting. These are just a few issues. We have a great deal more to say. Unfortunately, we were not given the opportunity to do so. And I do, I hope you will allow me to read what Mr. Brown wrote, that the notice for ZM 3126 was improper, that to allow this matter to proceed under the circumstances is unlawful, and we will take all necessary action to protect our rights in this travesty and mockery of the rule of law in Glenn County. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm George Ragdale.
Ragdale, please.
Spell it, R-A-G-S-D-A-L-E. I'm here to speak more about the process than I am about the substance of this matter. First, I heard Commissioner Usherri say that it's always been posted in the right of way, so we ought to let it go that way. That's part of the problem. The ordinance is written in a way that is, it either needs to be changed or it needs to be enforced.
One moment. I apologize for interrupting you. However, I'm going to allow you two minutes to speak on this topic because at the moment, we're just dealing with this issue. And as I said before, and I'll say it again, when you have an issue with the process of what's going on, you really have to go through, not us, but the Glenn County Commissioners. But go ahead.
I have an issue with the commission not following the process as it's outlined. That's not a Glenn County Commission issue. It's a planning commission issue at this point. But having said that, the applicant, at least in my reading of the report, has in no way indicated why they need a rezoning to a PD. It's already zoned office. What is it about the office designation that they cannot comply with right now that's causing them to ask for this rezoning? That hasn't been articulated at all. Mr. Lucas did describe all the expansions that a number of his tenants want to make, and I'm sure that there is a connection somehow, but none of the tenants that he described are insurance companies, and yet the application is for the new space to be solely for the purpose of an insurance office. Last, I think I heard Mr. Lucas say that parking is not an issue, and if parking is not an issue, I'm not sure why they're asking for a change in the parking requirement from 1/300 to 1/300.
Thanks, Ms. Ragdale. Mr. Lucas, would you like to address any of his questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name is David Zimmerman, D-I-M-M-E-R-M-A-N. I'm the president of Black Banks Homeowners Black Banks basically is neutral to this. However, we do have Lucas' properties as neighbors, as well as Sea Island and the other two properties. We also have covenants, legal covenants, with all those properties, which in many cases are more restrictive than the counties. There are issues from time to time with lights. Our covenants cover lights, cover drainage, cover a multitude of things. And we have always been able to work with the property owners to resolve those. When this originally came up, it was a different layout with parking against the back wall there, which we objected to, and it has been revised and left. The issue of drainage, we brought in our own consultant, and we have looked at it. We're not through looking at it. This present proposal makes it better than it was in the original What I'm here to say basically is that Black Banks, again, is neutral. However, we want to work with the people, and we have found Mr. Lucas and the other property owners very easy to work with, to resolve whatever the issues are. I also met with Mr. Rogers, who is one of my bosses, so to speak, and we have met with the engineers, and we're in the process of resolving his concerns. And I have every confidence that they'll be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragdale. Any more... Chairman, I'd like to speak. Would you like to address Mr. Ragdale's concerns?
I'll try to address some of the items that came up. In regard to the trees and the counting and the points associated with those, I assure you that I did that myself. The trees that were counted for the purpose of creating the points are on this lot that is being requested. None of the other trees on neighboring lots are in the right of way I'm going to step around just...
David, can you go back to the right wing?
The voice over.
Just to point out, there is, you can barely see it, but there is a masonry stucco retaining wall, not retaining wall, I guess it is a retaining wall, privacy wall that was put here all the way to the end of this property. The property line is actually beyond that, as you see right there. I just kind of wanted to point that out for clarification. And this is the stormwater, this is the stormwater, that's the stormwater line that's on the north side of the property here that gets Jason. There's another one coming down. With this expansion, we are going to capture the roof water and gutters and then do drainage pipe to the front. pipe to the front, and tie into the stormwater drainage system across the front. And the purpose for doing that is to actually take some of the stormwater off of this system here. You know, give, I'm not saying the water's not getting there by running off this property, but I don't think there's any runoff from this property, trying to do that property unless it's due anyway.
There was a question about the purpose for the rezoning to a PD. That really came about in discussions with staff when we, when this project was taken to the staff, as to how we should proceed with pursuing the project and accomplishing what we wish to do. It was a staff recommendation that the property be rezoned to a PD, so that a text could be written with it, we could limit the, what the use would be. And in regard to the use, I think the PD text says general office, I think it starts out with general office, to include such things as a real estate office, insurance office, but basically just an office use. And of course, again, you know, Mr. Lucas is eager to help Black Banks and anyone associated with it in trying to resolve issues with the stormwater runoff. I know maintenance has, is always an issue, and I don't know really what condition that those ditches are in once they leave his property and cross, across the Black Banks entrance, and then on further down to the marsh, so, but I know he's, he's willing to help.
I have a question. One issue that was raised, it said that you were planting trees on top of the drainage, drains, on top of the pipes, I guess, drainage pipes.
Well, that is, here's the lance, proposed lance.
Right.
Here is, and it's an underground stormwater pipe.
Right.
There's the drainage handle, and that's the pipe.
So where it turns and goes straight, are those roots going to interfere, you think, from those trees with that pipe?
Well, it's a concrete pipe, so I wouldn't think so.
Another issue, are you aware of any complaints that have been raised on the lighting, current lighting?
I know there were, there have been complaints in the past.
And how were those addressed?
Shielding, I know some shielding was added, to my knowledge, unless there's others that affect here, those two. The first I've heard about the lighting complaint, with the leaky door.
Okay.
Mr. Bryson, I hear what you're saying about the drainage, but that's a real concern of mine, because it will be after the fact, and I tend to lean toward drainage issues dealt with before. So, and there's been complaints before about the drainage in that particular area, and so I really have not seen or heard how it's truly going to be addressed. It's always, there's a question mark there.
Well, they've already indicated that all the roof coming backwards on the backside is all going to come to the front. So, even if they did nothing, it's not going to change that drainage unless you convert, divert the water off the backside to the front, and that's what you proposed to do, right? It seems to me the drainage is more than just this lot. I think all four lots probably need to get together with Black Banks homeowners and work out something to correct the current drainage, because it's just going to get worse. But I think what you're doing here is at least alleviating some of it, or all that's going off the back of the building to the front. So, that is an improvement on the drainage part.
But, well, I had another question for a moment. I had another question about, they said something about a wall being, the lady stood up and said that her business is going to be affected because of the wall and the wiring, would she no longer be able to communicate with the world, or something like that? Studdering Foundation? Studdering Foundation?
Right. Well, you know, I, in all honesty, I'm not absolutely sure where her communication line comes in to serve the building. It's possible that it be under this, I mean, we will address that, accommodate that when the time comes. Definitely for the utilization work.
As long as you just coordinate that, so she doesn't lose her, whatever, communications. Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
I'd just like to say one more thing.
If everybody in here's got a house, and we've all experienced nor'easters and everything else, with a show of hands, has your gutters ever overflowed? I mean, come on, gutter's not going to take care of it, guys. And as far as the drainage goes, I don't think people know what's going on. There's a drainage pipe dead in the center of this, and it's in a five-foot-deep swale, and it's swaled made out of grass up against the wall, the masonry stucco wall. When it rains and all the water gets backed up, it builds up that swale, builds up the pipes, and drains back toward our property, rather than out to the marsh. Sure, these are concrete, but these are plastic, they're not really a plant.
Any more comments?
The other thing that was not mentioned is that where they plan to plant the trees is a thirty-five-degree angle. So if they add dirt at that point, that is going to completely stop up the drains. I'm not sure how you plant any tree on a thirty-five-degree angle, and that leads down to the wall. If you fill in that in with dirt, your wall is probably going to fall in on the Black Banks side. I mean, there's a lot that has not been explained here. As far as the stuttering foundation wall, the place where the expansion is going to occur is the wall where our electric comes in, and I do believe I have shown that to Mr. Bryson. We asked for a dedicated line in twenty-eleven. We were, in fact, the very first tenants in the building, and it's true that Mr. Lucas took a chance buying the building, not knowing that whether he'd have a tenant or not, but we had the courage to sign up with him first. And not only a five-year lease, but asking to work into the lease another five years extension. So we too were taking a risk when we moved into this building, and we counted on it, and we chose it even though it wasn't built out yet. So we too were taking a risk, and it's, it's been a wonderful office, it is a wonderful office, and we hope, we'll keep it that way. Thank you.
Okay, so, we have possible motions now?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve of the rezoning application ZM three one two six.
With the change to the PD text, removing the word storage area.
With the, removing the word storage in this parking area.
There's been a motion to move, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of rezoning application ZM three one two six, with the provision to remove the storage bin.
Area.
Second, storage area. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, I'd like to, I'd like to make amendment to include that the drainage problem to the north side be solved.
Best to not agree with that, but still, that drainage is all, all that space in there.
Those folks back there, it should be solved from that property.
Well, I agree with that, but I mean, if we can make that happen, it'd be great, but you've got three other property owners that got to agree to that, and maybe Mr. Lucas can speak to that, where those other property owners be willing to work with Black Banks to correct that.
We have a motion on the floor.
We hired a consultant who was in the room. He met with the gentleman, he had the concerns, and we haven't had an investigation, you think maybe some of the pipes are popped up, but I think this gentleman over here is a very smart engineer, and I'm glad that there's something in the proposal that says we will try to fix it.
Well, I don't think it's part of it either, but I think, you can't talk, speak to three of the property owners, and they're not here.
Well, we, we've worked very well with the property owners.
And I, well, there was an, with, okay.
That's just not a criteria for the rezoning either, about drainage.
I'll say this, without that, I cannot vote for this proposal.
Well, I don't have a problem with adding as an amendment to that.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
I accept that amendment.
Accept that amendment?
I'll second the amended motion. Okay, so.
So there's a motion on the floor, a move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of rezoning application ZM three one two six, with the removal of storage bin, in addition to adding, what's your?
The drainage is correct.
Correct the drainage issue.
To the north side of the property.
To the north side of the property. Is there a second?
I second it.
I seconded it already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I seconded the amended motion.
Okay, okay, there's amended, amended, okay.
Okay.
So all in favor, say aye?
Aye, raise your right hand, raise your hand.
Raise your hand with one.
It doesn't matter, right or left.
Five, is five in favor?
Five in favor. Opposed? Two opposed.
Yes. Okay, the next one is subject ZM, no, I'm sorry, that's me. Unlike you. The next one is subject PP three one two one, guys, can we, oh, we still kind of conduct business here. PP three one two one, Stillwater Lots one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three, request to consider approval of preliminary plat for a three-lot subdivision on two-point-eight-two-nine acres. The proposed subdivision is located in the Stillwater subdivision along Stillwater Drive. Applicant Frank Deloche Jr., applicant and owner parcel ID zero four one four seven five seven. Current zoning, forest agricultural. Proposed zoning, no change. Existing land use, undeveloped. Proposed land use, subdivide the property into three lots. The preliminary plat proposes to subdivide a two-point-eight-two-nine acre parcel in the Stillwater subdivision in order to create three separate lots, each intended for a one-family dwelling. Approval of the preliminary plat for these three lots is subject to the limitation that only one building permit can be issued for one of these lots until such time as the capacity of the lift station two zero three two is upgraded. Excuse me.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Carl Burson, and I'll be delivering this presentation for Stillwater Lots one oh one through one oh three, PP three one two and two one. You can see the, the proposed parcel to be split is a part of Stillwater subdivision. It is immediately off of Stillwater Drive, as you come into the subdivision, the first area just past the first roundabout. See right there, highlighted and red on your screen. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the lot, of the lots looking northeast from the opposite side of the traffic circle, and again, there on the far side across the street there. Next slide. This is looking west, again, with the, this is one of the smaller islands, smaller traffic islands that abuts it right there. Next slide, please. This is looking west from the roundabout. This is the proposed preliminary plat. You can see it is a proposed three-lot subdivision, lots one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three. Each of these lots is going to be in excess of point seven-five acres, and they are going to, they're, again, with the zoning, it's forest agricultural. The reason this is coming before you is a preliminary plat and not an expedited subdivision is because Stillwater has already had one preliminary plat that we are going to be moving forward with, and so this is going to be a different one. Next slide, please. Again, this is to consider the preliminary plat approval for this three-lot subdivision on two-point-eight-two-nine acres, and with the forest agricultural, the intended use is only for individual, single-family homes. The access will be off of Stillwater Drive, and it is serviced by Brunswick-Glen Joint Water and Sewer. The JWSC condition for this is a subject, is a, because of the October letter that you folks received a while back, and again, this is specifically stating that only one of these three lots will be allowed to be developed based on the fact that until such time as the downstream wastewater capacity can withhold the other two. These are your possible motions. You can move to approve, move to defer, or move to deny, and I will entertain any questions you folks have.
Any questions, staff?
They can do one.
Just one, sir.
And why is, I mean?
That, that lot was actually part of the original platted subdivision, so that lot already has one proposed building right on it. Yes, sir. And, yes, ma'am?
We're given a preview history, and since they can only, they have a capacity issue at a lift station, but yet JWSC's, they haven't got any comments back.
I apologize, ma'am, I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to hear all that.
On, on your memo, it says that there's a capacity issue at lift station twenty thirty-two, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then over here on the review history that we received, JWSC has no comment. So how is it, have you, I mean, JWSC, JWSC has not entered that there's a capacity issue there?
Ma'am, they specifically asked us to write in that, that comment, that you saw those conditions, that's actually on the preliminary plat. Their plat, with the review history, what you're looking at on the, on the proposed preliminary plat, the language is actually part of the plat.
I just wonder why JWSC didn't weigh in on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just when we get, Commissioners, when we get ready to, if we make a motion for approval, I would like the language that we did for Tabby put in, which was what was recommended, and that's not the same language.
No, no, sir, and this language came directly from Joint Water and Sewer.
I'm not worried about Joint Water and Sewer, I'm worried about what our attorney said we should do for those things. And I think we ought to have that motion on anything on the north end until that capacity is over.
But Tabby Place had no preliminary plats, this one has rights under the preliminary.
But if we put this motion in, and Joint Water and Sewer has approved one, then it's, it does what, what we intended. I mean, they've gone to, what our motion did before, they couldn't do anything until Joint Water and Sewer approved it. They've approved one. They can't do anything with the other two until Joint Water and Sewer says so. And that's what this motion that we did before, based on what our attorney told us to do, would do. Again, I mean, it's, it's the same thing as what you have there, except the language, I think, is a little stronger. And they know they can't do anything else but the one, whatever Joint Water and Sewer says they can do. That's just, well, that's up to the Commission, that's just my, my thoughts that we should do.
Was the language that was used before? It was subject two, was it subject two, is that the language, subject two?
Well, but, when we get to that, the language is, that, whatever the numbers are, with such approval being conditional upon and subject to the applicant receiving all necessary approvals from Brunswick-Glen County and Water Sewer Commission for the, for the subdivision to be served by Public Water and Sanitary Sewer, and there being sufficient wastewater capacity to serve the subdivision and appliance with various things. So, I mean, it's the same, it's exactly what they're asking for.
It's just a little stronger.
It's stronger, and it's what our attorney said to do before, and I think it ought to be the same this time.
I agree.
That, that, that would be just part of our motion, the preliminary plat would still stand.
Correct.
Correct.
I mean, it's got approval, they got, already have the approval from Joint Water and Sewer for one, they can't do anything else, the Joint Water and Sewer says yes.
I think it's interesting that the Joint Water and Sewer is silent about their review.
Yes, sir, and we'll speak to them again about that, but this, that note on there came specifically from them. And if you're going to do that, the note about that, that note is going to, there's a note on there that's going to have to be removed and replaced, because the note, if you look directly above where it says certificate of preliminary design and so forth and so on, that note is on that plat right now, based upon their comments.
So I guess I don't see with what, if we put in the motion to this effect, that it affects that in any way. It lets them have the one, they've already got the approval from the Joint Water and Sewer, before they can get any more, they'd have to go back to Joint Water and Sewer.
I think what Mr.
And both say the same thing.
Yeah, I think, I think what Mr. Kirkendall's saying is that that would, if, if, if he made the motion, that would just simply strengthen the preliminary plat. It's not necessarily part of the preliminary plat, it's just part of what he thinks would be necessary for.
The note that is on the screen is already on that plat. And it would have to change to make, to match your motion. No. Yes, it would, meaning we'd have to amend the preliminary plat and bring it back to you.
Why, why, why couldn't we have, why, why, why couldn't we just have a motion with that language in it as part of, as part of our minutes?
Because it differs from what's on the plat that you're proving. The chair's going to sign something that's not what your motion will say.
Well, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's any different. It's just.
How is it?
This is, this is right here. That's the vice for me.
I just think we're going against what our attorney said to do in situations like that.
Okay. We're just pointing out that staff's belief is that the preliminary plat note should be changed to match whatever you have in your motion.
Let me ask you to do that.
Want to ask the applicant?
Well, no, it would be, be part of our motion that it be changed.
They, they wouldn't have to come back then if we said change it.
No, no.
Okay. That's fine.
But they would have to have it redone.
Just have to rewrite this, redraw this page and type that in.
Right.
Their, their engineer or surveyor to redo it.
We'll let the applicant answer that if we get to that. I'll just look.
Well, if we make that kind of motion, can we, and if it got approved, then can we send it forward with, and they would change it by the time they got to the Commissioners?
It doesn't go to Commissioners.
Oh, it just goes, comes back, we have to come back here.
Yeah, it'll go, it'll go as a final plat.
Right, but this would have to come back. No, no, well then, okay. Well, then why are you saying you have to bring it back?
I'm not saying you have to bring, I'm saying you have to change the plat. The note on the plat will not match the, the motion if you change the language.
I'm just saying that's what I would like to do if we do that. We haven't got the presentation yet.
Please state your name.
Commissioners, Gary Neville with Shoup Surveying, Brunswick, Georgia. That's a, I don't think I need to spell it now. Okay. We clearly understand we can only get one sewer tap with these three lots until JWSC says they've improved the pump station and as Mr. Hanley said, the note that we put on there came directly from them. It was their language for it. We need to change it, we can. If you want to make it part of your motion, I can supply them with new plats or we can put it on the final plat. Because we're planning on going to final plat shortly after this. Roads in, services are in, all we need to do is set the corners and we're going to final plat stage on this. We'll be submitting next month for the county.
Mr. Neville, is the, are the taps already there?
Yes.
The sewer taps?
The sewer and water taps are above, all there.
So, so, so they're already there?
The, these three lots were in the original preliminary plat design, they were just not final plated at that time or yet.
So in terms of the service, it's?
They're already there, but we can't hook up until JWSC says it's okay.
And that's what the plat says?
Yes. That's what our, the statement says on the plat.
I don't know why we need to strengthen it if the plat already says that.
That's fine. I'm just trying to get the thing the same as what we did before.
I know what we.
I would like this motion and everything we do at the north end.
That probably wasn't on the plat at all before, so this is on the plat and it does say subject to the JWSC approval.
Yes.
It does say you only get one tap and so forth. So I think it's already covered on the plat. So I don't see a need to change that, so.
That's fine.
Any more questions of the applicant? Thank you. Anyone close?
Well, this is not a public, this is not a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Staff comments? Comments and questions?
Comments and questions? I'd like to make a motion. Does anybody have any more questions? I move to approve application PP 3121.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor? Unanimous? Request, consider site plan approved for the Southern Soul Restaurant and Love Golf Designs to increase parking and install a sidewalk. On the site plan, there is also a proposed covered outdoor dining area for the Southern Soul Restaurant. Love Golf Designs is located at 100 Brunswick Avenue at the corner of Brunswick Avenue and Circle Drive. Southern Soul is located at 2020 Demery Road at the corner of Demery Road and Brunswick Avenue. Applicant Larry Bryson with Larry Bryson Architect, agent for Southern Soul Land Company LLC, applicant, Southern Soul Land Company LLC, owner of 100 Brunswick Avenue, Quarantine 1 LLC, owner of 2020 Demery Road. Parcel ID 04-02788 and 04-02801. Current zoning, GC General Commercial District. Comprehensive plan use designation, the adopted future land use map shows this site as a village center. Existing land use, restaurant, offices, and a warehouse. Planning, the Southern Soul Restaurant opened in 2006 and 2008. They apply for an amendment to the opening, I mean, operating conditions for an existing takeout restaurant business to add outside patron space, seat, and striped parking to their site. The application was approved. In March of 2010, the restaurant was damaged in a fire. The owner was allowed to reconstruct the building to its original footprint. The Southern Soul Land Company LLC has recently leased the second building on the property to expand the business. This site plan covers two properties, the Southern Soul Restaurant and the Love Golf Designs Building. The properties are separated by Circle Drive Alley. The proposed site plan shows the installation of a sidewalk to connect some of the parking areas with the restaurant, new parking areas on Circle Drive Alley, and a parking lot behind the Love Golf Designs Building, and the construction of an outdoor seating area between the two buildings leased by the Southern Soul Land Company LLC for the restaurant.
Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This application is a update to the site plan for Southern Soul Restaurant and for Davis Love Golf Designs, which is accessible off of Brunswick Avenue. It's, this is a panoramic of the front of the property that's on 2020 Demery. It's the, the restaurant, the two buildings that the restaurant has rented. They are going to be making that second portion restaurant as well, or associated activities with the restaurant. And in between the two buildings is where they are proposing to build their outdoor dining area. This is a panoramic of the side of Southern Soul right there and then Circle Alley, Circle Drive Alley right there where they plan to put some parking and then Davis Loves, Davis Love Golf Design Building. This is a shot that's also a panoramic of, taken across the street from the second portion of the Davis Love Golf parking area and where Mr. Hanley has the pointer is where Southern Soul is. This is Brunswick Avenue that crosses in front of the, the picture or crosses, crosses the picture. This is the corner of Brunswick Avenue and Circle Drive. This is a picture of the chain link fence right now that they have up to block the internal parking for the Love Golf Designs Building. They have proposed in their landscape, proposed landscape plan to replace that with a wooden fence that you, one cannot see through. Here is the parking area.